For crying out loud. All that drama and no mic. Good evening and welcome to the October 14, 2020 City Council Meeting and and Meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed for this meeting on the city's Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. Tonight's meeting will include a public comment period. I'm happy to see you all here. If you wish to speak during the public comment period and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form available on our Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage, or fill out one of the printed forms available at the entrance to this room. We'll accept those forms until 7:35. The forms will be used to generate the random order of speakers and to correctly enter speakers' names into the public record. Please note that the comment period will be limited to 90 minutes. I think we're probably going to be okay, but I've just a just a word that if you can be succinct, that ensures that the people behind you will have an opportunity to speak. You, everyone receives two and a half minutes to speak. For those of you who are attending the meeting remotely, you are welcome to email your comments to City Council. And as a reminder, the City Council's meeting rules of conduct include: no flags, signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or any conduct that obstructs the business of the council. We are seeking to create a safe and respectful place so that everybody can express their ideas and be heard and feel comfortable doing so. And you are always welcome to wave your fingers in silent support. Again, we, COVID is around, as well as all kinds of other respiratory illnesses. So if you're not feeling well or have had contact, been in close contact with someone who is not well, we really encourage you to attend remotely rather than in person. And this room is a little bit full, so if anyone feels the need for a mask, I think there are masks outside if you need one. And just another housekeeping note. In the case of a medical emergency, we have an automated external defibrillator on the wall right underneath the screen there behind the staff. And in the event of it, that we need to evacuate this room quickly, there are doors on that, on what's my left, your right side, or the double doors in the back for a speedy retreat. And with that, I call this meeting of the Eugene City Council to order. And normally, I would begin move right into a land acknowledgement. Today, part of our ceremonial matters is to is for me to read a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that proclamation incorporates the land acknowledgement. So we'll, so I'll do it all, all at once. And so here, the proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas, sitting on Kalapuyia land, our city is one of more than 150 cities and towns across the nation that recognize today, the second Monday in October, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Oregon is one of more than a dozen states that recognize this holiday in some form. Since 1977, more and more governing bodies have opted to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. To memorialize this commitment, on March 14, 2016, the City Council adopted Resolution 5148, declaring the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day for the city of Eugene instead of commemorating conquest. We recognize resilience. And whereas, on this day, we celebrate the heritage of Indigenous people to show respect of their history and to enlighten the public toward a better understanding of modern Indigenous communities. In this way, we work to pursue a changed narrative about the history of Indigenous people in Eugene and across the lands. The city values the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and deep cultural contributions that have substantially shaped the character of our city and state. And whereas, since time immemorial, the Kalapuyia people have been the Indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. A land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of Indigenous histories and to honor Native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuyia people were dispossessed of their Indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced Indigenous people. And whereas, the city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuyia Ilhi. Kalapuyia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronn Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and Indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. And whereas, our commemoration of Indigenous Peoples' Day is one step on the path to replacing harmful historic untruths with knowledge about displacement, genocide, and loss, resilience, and belonging. Indigenous Peoples' Day pushes against erasure and urges reevaluation of history and recognize Indigenous representation, equality, and justice. We are inspired by local and regional Indigenous people who continue to fight against the systemic racism and injustices inflicted by the United States government. We are committed to improving our city's actions that pursue a higher quality of life and well-being for our Indigenous communities. And whereas, as mayor, I stand with city leadership for inclusivity and the recognition of past harm and offer our commitment to work towards change. We pledge better government-to-government relationships between the city and local tribal nations. We will build the foundation for respectful and strengthened intergovernmental relationships by committing ourselves to a deeper understanding of the effects of colonization, the current needs of our Indigenous community, and connections that allow us to collaborate on shared interests. Now, therefore, I, Lucy Venice, Mayor of the City of Eugene, Oregon, do hereby proclaim support of the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October and ask the residents of Eugene to utilize this day as an opportunity to reflect on the strength and resilience of Indigenous people, to recognize the importance of Indigenous peoples everywhere, to celebrate their thriving cultures and values, to stand in solidarity with Indigenous peoples elsewhere, to encourage other businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October, and to commit to continue efforts to promote the well-being and growth of Eugene's Indigenous community. Thank you all. And with that, we are ready to move into our first item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. And so I will turn to the Council vice, oh. Oh, sorry, I skipped right over committee reports and items of interest. Yes, and I know we have a long one. So I know I have Counselor Evans, anyone else with report? And Counselor Semple, okay, Counselor Evans.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give the report for the IGR Committee. The IGR Committee, Intergovernmental Relations Committee, met on Wednesday, October 7, and reviewed a draft 2025 State Priorities document from staff. The IGR Committee discussed certain items, and staff will continue to build on more definition into the priorities as more information becomes available. The draft priorities include: secure long-term direct funding to cities for unhoused shelter; request $8.5 million for Phase 1 of the Clear Lake Road infrastructure project; support increased state investment in behavioral health systems; support increased protections related to threats to public officials; secure authority for local governments to prohibit firearms in public buildings; improvements to ground emergency medical transportation system; seek a minor revision to Senate Bill 1565, back was passed in 2022, to support city parking operations efficiencies. Potential additions priorities include revision to House Bill 3115 from 2021. Governor Kotek's housing production framework is currently being worked on in various committees and agencies' processes. City staff are participating in the work groups. When the draft package is available, IGR staff will review and update the priorities as necessary. The transportation package, Eugene seeks to protect the current 50-30-20 split of state cash tax revenue between state, county, city allocations, and also apply that allocation to any new revenue source. Example, road user fee that the legislature considers. In the meeting, the committee passed the following motion directing city staff to schedule a work session after Council winter break on the position of the city to repeal House Bill 3115. The IGR manager believes that addressing this item in January will provide a better opportunity to gather additional information for the work session, and should City Council provide new direction on the law, there will be enough time to prepare a city position during the upcoming long session. The next committee meeting on Wednesday, November 6, to continue the refinement of the 2025 state priorities. As you heard during this evening's work session, staff is sequencing across the upcoming work sessions and the IGR committee meetings to incorporate direction from City Council into the priorities. Please let the IGR committee member, or the city manager, or staff, know if you have any items to include in on our agenda. And lastly, copies of approved meeting minutes and draft priorities will be included within the October 24 Council packet. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Semple.
Turn your, turn your mic on.
I will learn how to do this when I am gone. Eugene is a dangerous place. I'm here to talk about sidewalks again. Thursday, yep, another face plant. It really hurts, and it's been since Thursday. I can't, you know, be safe in my neighborhood and walk my dog and walk to work. The sidewalks are 100 years old. The ones that have been replaced, our trees have pushed them up, not level. It's scary. The property owners are responsible for the sidewalks. And having replaced my corner sidewalk, I can tell you, it's really expensive. But I didn't want anyone to get hurt, and I didn't want to get sued if someone did get hurt. So you're welcome, insurance industry. I recommend umbrella insurance if you're going to have a rotten sidewalk. If you have to replace the sidewalk, you might not, you might lose your house because they're so expensive, you can't afford your mortgage. But if someone falls down, you might lose your house because that's expensive, too. Property owners don't have the money, the city doesn't have the money. We have ideas, they're good ideas, but it's not, not going to happen yet. So when the sidewalks aren't safe on so many levels, the city becomes dangerous. We need solutions, not here yet. In the meantime, we need to keep ourselves safe. So this afternoon, me and my climate-unfriendly cans went outside with my trusty brush, and I scraped away the dirt, and I sprayed the crumbled up parts and the ledges. And I was sure someone was going to come out and yell at me, but every person who came by thanked me, and they told me how they tripped and pointed out the exact places. Went through all my paint, realized I got to go to something more sustainable. I'm here to tell you light colors are better than danger orange and yellow. I want you to help me. Come on, Eugene, join in, help out, keep us walking safely. Get a brush, the wire one works so much better, then it will stick. And let's decorate the edges of our dangers. Maybe not paint the town, but let's paint the sidewalks so we can walk safely. And have some fun, you can pick your own colors, you know, magic mint, barely blue, petal pink. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Any, any other, for keeping us working to keep us all safe, appreciate that. Any other items from, from Councillors? Okay, now, we're ready for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar 1.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please vote. All right, I'm waiting to see. I have, I have six. Who am I missing? Emily, Emily, you didn't vote. Okay, there we go. All right, and I, and thank you very much. That passes. And so now I, we're going to move into, I'm going to close the, this meeting of the Eugene City Council and call the October 14, 2024 Meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency to order. And we have an action item. Do you want to speak to this first, and then we'll put a motion on? Thank you. Microphone.
I'm not paying you for every time you say that. It's not like the curse word jar. The next two items are related to the Urban Renewal Agency's purchase of two downtown properties. This is actually meeting two goals of yours and ours. One is to start preparing some of these properties for increased housing, hopefully in the downtown area. And the second is, we used the sale of these properties as part of our one-time dollars to fund us through this biennium, as you might remember. So what you're doing tonight would be, Agency Board would be approving additional funds for the purchase of the properties so it can be incorporated into the December supplemental budget. And then we'll need Council to consider authorizing the city manager to facilitate the transfer of the properties per Council's approved property disposal process. So we've kind of outlined all of that. We have staff here that can answer questions, but it's essentially facilitating talking about selling two of the downtown properties to the Urban Renewal Agency so they can then start working on housing.
Thank you. So Counselor Groves, you want to put that motion on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to offer to purchase the North Butterfly Lot for $1,600,000 and the 8th and Pearl Lot for $1,020,000 from the City of Eugene and direct the Agency Director to include $210,000 from the Downtown Urban Renewal District and $170,000 from the Riverfront Urban Renewal District for these purchases in the December 2024 supplemental budget, and take all necessary actions to acquire the properties.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, need for clarification on this? All in favor, please vote. Okay, all, all in favor, that's unanimous, none opposed, and that passes, thank you. And now I will close the October 14, 2024 Meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and call the October 14, 2024 City Council Meeting to order, and I'll turn to Counselor Groves again.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to direct the city manager to facilitate the transfer of the North Butterfly Lot for $1,600,000 and the 8th and Pearl Lot for $1,020,000 to the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please vote. Well, vote in favor or not, I guess. And that passes unanimously with, with one absentee. So thank you very much. And with that, we are ready to move into the public comment. A public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official. And I know that the list is now ready. And what, and, and so I will just actually turn this over to staff to walk us through the process.
Good evening, Mayor, we have 18 speakers this evening. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. If you are announced as the next speaker, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give Council, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speaker this evening is Lynn Woodrich, followed by Eva Carlson.
My name's Lynn Woodrich, I'm the Active Bethel Community Co-Chair. I've lived in the Bethel area over 30 years, I live in Ward 8. I'm speaking for the Active Bethel Community Board. The USD Clean Fuels Rail-to-Tanker Truck Transfer Facility proposed location in the already burdened Trainsong neighborhood on Bethel Drive needs to move further north so that it can be accessed through an established industrial area away from residential areas. If there's an explosion at their proposed site, besides killing the residents, it could possibly take out the nearby Eugene Fire and Emergency Management Services Department and the Eugene Springfield Fire Station Number 2. These buildings include the office of the fire marshal and other key emergency personnel. It could also affect the City of Eugene Public Works facility on Roosevelt Avenue, thanks to Mayor Venice, Councillors Leach, Evans, and Groves for their help in trying to find ways to stop this from happening. We would like to hear a progress report for the Public Health Development Standards. Until the city manager provides you with the Health Overlay Zone language to review, there's nothing to act on. The Public Health Development Standards work can be achieved by modifications to our current city land use code based on the Eugene Clear Lake Overlay Zone and policies adopted by other cities. It appears in your tentative agenda that there's room for another work session to finalize it. There's an immediate need for the Public Health Development Standards for the Bethel and Trainsong areas now included in our Bethel area planning. We need to get ahead of heavy industrial permit requests for the Westgate Industrial Park on North Danaboe Avenue and possibly others that are in the pipeline that we're unaware of. Please hurry with the Public Health Development Standards to include at least the Bethel and Trainsong neighborhoods so we won't be saddled with another J.H. Baxter-type business in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speaker is Eva Carlson, followed by Nancy Buffham.
Hi, I'm Eva Carlson, and I live at the end of Washington Street in the Conestoga Huts. And I just want to say, I came here on September 23, and I addressed you guys about one of the biggest questions that we have in this city, and that's where can the human beings that's on the street go? And I stood at this meeting, and I listened to the very end that you guys addressed everything else but what I had to ask about. And there's human beings out there dying, freezing to death, and everything else, empty buildings that we could very well get a hold of and see if people can't, they've donated places before, why can't we get them again? places before, why can't we get them again? We hand out money to everything else except for to get these people off the street. This is one of my biggest passions, and I'm not going to stop until we can get answers. And so, you know, I sit here, and, you know, people say, one of the city council members had said they were afraid to walk through the park because of what the homeless people were doing. Well, you know, a couple officers were heard calling homeless people NHI, non-human involved. So should I hate the whole squad? No, I shouldn't, because it's not every single one, just like it's not every single human being out there on the street that's doing things. But yet, there's so many people to sit and judge them about it's every homeless person that does this? It's not. Not all homeless people do that things out there. But a lot of them are doing things just to survive, and they just need a place over their head. And that's all I ask. And my other question is, is there's a gentleman that they have been doing their own little spray painting thing on the board over by our place, and they're asking to have another board put up. He's willing to buy the materials and would like to get the okay to do that if we can. And I told him I would try to bring that up tonight. So I'm asking, with your guys' permission, that he has the money to do it himself and would be happy to build another board so that they have places to spray paint. There's people that bring a van full of children from group homes that have mental disabilities, and so that's what they do to help them, is to spray paint stuff on that board. And they do great art. So if we're asking if we could, even with them building it, not even having to use city council money, we would like to get permission for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Our next speakers are Nancy Buffum, followed by Curtis Blankenship.
I'd just like to say I love that art. I bike past that art, and I really appreciate it every time I see it change. My name is Nancy Buffum. I'm a resident of Ward 7, and I'm here to talk about sidewalks. And I think that I've been upstaged, so I'll try to keep it short. The sidewalks of Eugene are part of citywide infrastructure. The city needs to prioritize the people who are the most vulnerable and the most inconvenienced by traffic danger, and that means prioritizing sidewalks. It has been studied and estimated that as many as 30% of people do not drive, either because they are too young, too old, have disability of some kind that prevents them from driving, do not have a license, or do not have access to a car frequently for economic reasons. I'm asking the city to keep sidewalk safety and sidewalk improvements at the top of your priority list, out of consideration for people who do not drive, out of consideration for people who want to walk safely in their own neighborhoods, and out of consideration for the overall goal of enabling it, enabling people who do not want to drive to be able to get places safely without having to get in a car. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Our next speakers are Curtis Blankenship, followed by Stefan Strack.
Hi, Curtis Blankenship, Springfield, Oregon. I just want to talk about the boulders that we've put under the freeway overpasses. You know, in Los Angeles, for years, since, I grew up in Los Angeles, I've lived here off and on since 1994, but in Los Angeles, when I was, since I was a kid, the, under the freeway overpasses have been used, they rent them out temporarily to RV storage, and, you know, they'll have plant nurseries there under the freeway overpasses. Have you thought of, could you please use those for some, maybe put some homeless people's RVs to live in temporarily underneath the freeway overpasses? I'm pretty sure the county owns those, and, you know, just temporarily under there, or instead of just putting boulders under there, because to me, I have nothing, I've heard good things about the city manager, but to me, it looks to me like you have some kind of relationship with the quarry contractor or the cement contractor, because, and, you know, we have tourism in this town. What does that say to people? Oh, Eugene has a novel solution to people living under the freeways, you know? People aren't stupid. They know what those boulders are for, and they're not even landscaped, although clever idea. So the other thing is, and again, I have nothing against the city manager, but the other thing is, you know, I've paid taxes up here since 1985, and like I said, I've been up and down, up here off and on since then. And, you know, the Wells Fargo Building, it used to be the first interstate building downtown. I've always looked at that thing. Can we put the parking, just the parking structure under there? Can we use it for a warming center? The parking structure underneath the Wells Fargo Building, you have the bathrooms down there in downtown for the Saturday market. I know she just moved them off, but, you know, there's already a homeless presence down there. Let's get people out of the cold this winter under the Wells Fargo, the former Wells Fargo Building. It's always been some issue with that building. As long as I've known, been here, there's always some weird issue with the Wells Fargo First Interstate Bank Building. All right, I'll give up my time. Thanks.
Thank you, Curtis. Our next speakers are Stefan Strack, followed by David Eichel.
G'day, City Council. My name is Stefan "Ace Dog" Strack, and my preferred pronouns are bro slash dude, if you do so, please. And I just wanted to advocate for green spaces in this city and say that you guys have actually been doing a pretty solid job in this regard. I did take a look at the plans you guys had for, you know, promoting more green spaces and buildings, and for giving credit where credit is due, I do take credit for having advised you guys so well over the years, and it's an honor that you guys are, you know, paying better attention. Unfortunately, as soon as I turned my back, I just noticed little mistakes like selling off valuable city property for scam urban renewal proposals, which are nationwide, nothing more than a grift from greedy developers. And I'm sorry for not speaking up more often. I've been pretty busy lately. City property really should be utilized for nice beneficial park space, which really benefits the entire city for generations to come. And this is how you craft a truly world-famous city that's actually valued for something besides people running in a circle. All over the world, there are gorgeous cities with fantastic public spaces, and these are really cherished and preserved spots. Unfortunately, that's one of the big complaints people have about Eugene, is the degradation of our public spots and the lack of actually really, you know, improving these spaces with public artwork and visually pleasing aesthetic. And I'd really like to see plans for that in the upcoming years. There's a lot of great artists and public space designers that I think wouldn't be too difficult or expensive to get input from. And I would like to take a minute to thank you so much, Emily Semple, for your future career as one of Eugene's next urban artists. And I'm sure we're all going to see great things in your time off.
Thank you, Stefan.
Thank you.
Our next speakers this evening are David Eichel, followed by Lisa Levson.
David Eichel, Ward 1. The Ferry Street Bridge community narrative being promoted by Delisha Brown and others is dishonest, inaccurate, and hateful. I'm especially offended by the misrepresentation that Eugene was a sundowntown. It was not. The record is quite clear. The mayor and each of the council members have links to my webpage dealing with this and many other misrepresentations being promoted. I have filed criminal charges with the Oregon Attorney General's Office against these grifter promoters. Making misrepresentations to solicit charitable donations is a serious crime punishable by a year in jail plus fines. There are enough problems in the world without people inventing them. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speakers are Lisa Levson, followed by Linda Kelly.
Nice to see you all again, Mayor Venice, city councillors, city staff, all citizens of Eugene. I'm here to represent Breakfast Brigade, a organization, a nonprofit organization that feeds the homeless in Washington Jefferson Park Wednesday through Saturday from 9 until 10. We are now a new nonprofit called Neighbors Feeding Neighbors with an emphasis on the fact that we are all neighbors here in Eugene regardless of our housing status or our hunger. I have an update for you about a couple of things, including a chart that I will leave in your inbox, that tells us a little bit about what's going on with hunger in Eugene. We had complaints from some of our neighbors who we value dearly in our neighborhood, the Whittaker Community Council, and others who are affected by people coming into the park to get food or people just living in the park to get food. It's not just the unhoused. We are seeing seniors, we're seeing families with children, we're seeing disabled people, we are seeing residents from the neighborhood come to get our meals, and it is due to what is going on with hunger throughout our city. Our numbers jumped from April to September by 92%. We doubled the amount of meals that we were serving per day. We went from an average of 139 meals a day to 267 meals a day, which is why I've given you this information. We think this is going on in every single neighborhood in Eugene, and we're seeing it out in Bethel now that we're cooking at Bethesda Lutheran. We're seeing hungry people out there. So we want to continue that dialogue about how we feed hungry people safely and effectively with dignity. And our organization needs to do that with cover from the elements and with zero barrier, because Food Forlane County requires a zero-barrier civil rights, all people come to get meals. So we're here to ask for your continued support in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speakers are Linda Kelly, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Good evening, Mayor and city councillors. My name is Linda Kelly, and I reside in Ward 1. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. At this point in our climate crisis, I wonder why we should be needing a conversation about whether or not to allow gas appliances in new construction that has MUPTI tax breaks. We cannot continue to use methane gas for anything but the hardest-to-transition sectors of our economy. Even those industrial sectors are now looking at options to stop relying on such a dangerous form of energy. We now know this. We have a climate recovery ordinance, been around since 2014. Our city has acknowledged the climate problem we are in and voiced the intention to do what is possible to bring down our emissions. New construction is an obvious, easy choice that we can make. Energy choice, the phrase, was brought to us by Northwest Natural Gas, funded with over $900,000 to defeat your council's work on electrification. We do not have a choice whether or not to stop at a red light or wear a seatbelt or a choice to carry a semi-automatic gun in public. Society is dependent upon rules that affect the safety of our whole community. Burning methane gas does affect us all locally and globally, both present and into the future. We do know this now. New construction using city funding for tax exemptions should have an automatic requirement to be all-electric. It is your citizens' money that supports these projects with MUPTI, with MUPTI exemptions. The proposed accelerated MUPTI process without a review board is another step backwards that I've heard about. The city should not give tax exemptions to any city-sponsored housing projects that, excuse me, that install methane appliances. Please use your intelligence and your caring to move us forward into a future we can all live with. Thank you for taking my testimony.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speakers this evening are Bill O'Brien, followed by Ken Jones.
You know very well, this election is coming up, November 5, and it's going to be a very hard slog for all of us. People are going to get upset, and I'm upset. Basically, I'm upset with the National Congress. We only have about, give or take, 10 or 12 Democrats that will say, we want, we want a peace resolution, a ceasefire. We want equal justice for Palestinians. That, there's a lot of wordplay. Oh, we want a two-state solution. We want a one-state solution. Well, you know, this has been going on for, not since October 7th last year. It's been going on for, who knows, 8,000 years, you know? I'm not, I don't know who threw the first rock or the first slingshot, you know? I'm not, I'm not up for that. But one thing I do, I'm up for, is I know, I really, really, truly hope that Al Hoyle talks to the Green Party candidate in our district, in our district. They're talking. Manita Svein is talking. I'm sure they're all talking. But I want to see some kind of action. Because, you know what I'm doing? I'm holding my vote to the last minute. I'm going to vote for Kamala Harris. Great, wonderful. I mean, she's a happy person, happy warrior to some degree, and she's beyond my ken. But not cutting it with a lot of progressive Democrats with Al Hoyle. At that debate at the city club, there was a lot of talk of genocide. Well, genocide is going on. Maybe I'm creating genocide, too, because I have my anger. It's just getting out of control, and someone's, I don't, you know, I don't know how you can put it in the box. Jim Weaver, I'm just thinking of Jim Weaver. He told, he said, I had this Oregon congressman, he's in a box, and we put a bow, bow on the box, packaged it. And this is what we're getting. We're getting these packaged candidates that just send, just really just, and I'm getting all these text messages in my.
Thank you, Bill. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Ken Jones, followed by Carolyn Partridge.
Good evening, Mayor Venice and city council members. My name's Ken Jones. I live in Ward 1, and I've lived there about a year and four months. New Oregon resident. And I came here partly because I believed that Eugene and Oregon in general is a good, climate-friendly place and is working hard to do the right things on that issue. We've been looking for a house to buy the whole time and very actively, and one of the issues that I'm seeing is how many houses in Eugene have gas appliances. And they're relatively new ones in many cases. And just recently, I think in the last week, I just heard about the Riverfront Housing Project. Turns out that that is all gas, and I guess was approved somehow by, I guess, this council. And I don't quite, I hear a lot of comments about climate, and that was what I expected, but I'm not hearing enough action, really. And we have to get gas out of the houses that we have currently, not just in new construction. So when I'm looking for a house, and it's, you know, a certain amount, and it has gas and it has everything else I want, I'm having to think how much it's going to cost me to take that out, because I don't want something in there that is going to cause me harm physically, because there's plenty of research out there that is showing that fossil gas is really bad for us, but also for the climate. So it's just, I urge you to take action on climate issues as rapidly as you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Our next speakers are Carolyn Partridge, followed by Sandra Bishop.
Hello, Mayor Venice, city councillors, and city manager Maderi. My name is Carolyn Partridge, and I live in Ward 2. I'm here to speak about the accelerated MUPTI ordinance under consideration. With the passage of this ordinance, Eugene will be offering developers a significant financial inducement to build new housing in the city core. It does not seem draconian to require that the new construction be all-electric. In fact, studies show that it is less expensive to build new buildings when only one energy source needs to be installed. I encourage you to put language in the ordinance I encourage you to put language in the ordinance that stipulates all appliances must be electric to qualify for this tax exemption. This is a logical opportunity to close the gap on our CRO goals. It will save money and emissions in the long run, and the Ninth Circuit Court cannot interfere. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Our next speakers are Sandra Bishop, followed by Taiton Torgrimson.
Good evening, Sandra Bishop. My home is in Ward 2, and I am the Vice Chair of Jefferson Westside Neighbors. I am speaking tonight as an individual, not representing the neighborhood group. So I'm here to respectfully ask the council to please allow the public to observe at the MUPTI review panel meetings. I recently was asked if I would throw my hat in the ring to be a possible nominee for appointment by the neighborhood groups to be a neighborhood representative on the board, and I said, on the panel review, review panel, I said, "Well, gee, I wonder what they do," and I did a lot of background research, and I decided there were other people that I would not, at this point, want to be on the MUPTI review panel. And then, as a neighborhood leader, I'm going to, I'm on the neighborhood, all the neighborhood, all the neighborhood board members vote on the two representatives on the committee that come from neighborhoods. So I said, "Great, I'll go observe the meeting." I asked for, I thought it was a Zoom meeting, I asked for a link, and I was summarily told that these meetings are closed to the public. And I thought, "Well, that's really odd." And I know there's no proprietary information given out at the MUPTI meetings. That doesn't happen anymore, so that's not a consideration. Technically, they are not probably covered under the open meetings law, but to have an advisory group like that that doesn't allow people to come and observe seems to be too limited, so please, allow people to observe at those meetings. And I'd also like to put a disclaimer here, I was not one of the people who crashed the meeting or came in unexpectedly at a physical location. I thought it was on Zoom. I just wanted to watch it on Zoom, to see how those people interact and see who I can vote for that might serve well on that review board. So please, let people observe the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Our next speakers are Taiton Torgrimson, followed by Jim New.
Hello, Mayor Venice and Council members. I live in Springfield. My name's Taiton Torgrimson, currently a college student at the U of O. I'm wondering, how do you and all your members plan on attacking the homelessness rate? We've had a few people speak about it already, and more just curious, where are they supposed to go? How are they supposed to contain themselves, and what's your guys' plans on keeping it in check and making everyone have a safe winter, safe life all around? Thank you.
Thank you, Taiton. Our next speakers are Jim New, followed by Michael Beavers.
Mayor, Council, and City Manager, my name is Jim New. I live in Ward 7. The five-year trial for an accelerated MUPTI plan coincides with the five years the City of Eugene has as a deadline for meeting the goals of the Climate Recovery Ordinance. With the fossil fuel and carbon reduction goals of the CRO far from being met, the city is setting a course for future litigation. The accelerated MUPTI plan deters the city from meeting these goals and supports cause for legal proceedings. Relaxing public benefit requirements such as lead building certification standards while streamlining the building process encourages acceptance of more carbon-emitting construction processes. MUPTI is using taxpayer dollars to authorize the installation of fossil fuel appliances that add to the building carbon emissions and polluting health conditions. It is not an argument of gas versus electric, but of consumer health protection and the city's inability to implement its tools in reducing building carbon emissions set in the Climate Action Plan. MUPTI rules require building energy savings of 10% above code requirements, whereas state Climate Action Plan goals for building greenhouse gas reductions, for building greenhouse gas reductions are much higher. We need a more stringent measures in carbon reductions, not less. I urge council to strengthen MUPTI rules by not allowing methane gas appliances in city projects, to not gut existing rules related to community benefits, and to approve the fire fee to keep sustainability and climate action moving forward. Failure to reduce city greenhouse gas emissions 7.6% per year are already five years gone, and reducing the community's fossil fuel use 50% by 2030 will not be achieved with accelerated MUPTI plans. These plans also inhibit the city goal of full building decarbonization by 2045. The clock is ticking. When do we start? Thank you for hearing my comment.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speakers are Michael Beavers, followed by Lisa Arkin.
My name is Michael Beavers. I live in Ward 6 in West Eugene, and I am here as the General Manager of three retail locations in Eugene. We are suffering with employees not being safe. We have had, just last two weeks, we had an employee beat over the head by an unhoused person with a club. I've had employees stabbed, multiple employees stabbed, punched, spit on. I feel we are not getting any help from police, we're not getting any help from the city. We feel extremely unsafe. A lot of my employees feel very unsafe, and I'm coming here as an outlet today to talk to you guys, to ask for help. Forgive me, I don't know some of the actions already taken to maybe help the unhoused crisis and stuff, but what I don't see is people being arrested. After my employee was hit over the head two weeks ago, the same person who did it came to another location, caused a problem there. This person is not in jail right now. I doubt he ever will be. This is becoming a very unsafe environment in Eugene for retail workers. I believe if you ask any convenience store worker up and down 6, 7, 99, they will tell you the exact same story, and it's very sad. I've had many employees quit after being assaulted. We are having huge losses in theft. Our financial paperwork shows almost 5,000 on average a month is what we lose in theft, and this is coming directly out of our pockets. It's keeping wages low when we can't afford to pay people extra money due to the amounts of theft that happen, and it's creating a very big problem. So I need to educate myself before I come here the next time to see what the already in-place plans are for some of this crisis going on. However, I am just asking for more help, more police presence, and more focus into the bad side of what the unhoused crisis is causing as far as crime, safety, and things of that nature. So I will come back for the next meeting after I do some research to see what is already being worked on, but I wanted to come today just to voice my opinion with you guys and let you know that we are feeling very unsafe at our place of work. We do a lot to bring jobs and stuff like that to the community. We do donations. I can't tell you how many unhoused people I've fed personally, and now it's backfiring and becoming very unsafe for us. So I just wanted to voice that for you guys, and when I come back, I'll see if there's anything I can add that might be helpful going forward. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michael. Our next speakers are Lisa Arkin, followed by Deborah McGee.
After, no, good evening, City Councilors. Thanks for allowing public comment. My name is Lisa Arkin. I live in Ward 1, work with Beyond Toxics, and I appreciate that many of you have expressed extreme dismay that Eugene, a neighborhood in Eugene with our lowest-income population, our most diverse population, and our most pollution-burdened population is the chosen site of a proposed fuel transfer station. That's Train Song. Nearly 100 residents packed into a community meeting a week ago tonight to express their fears about that site being a major fuel transfer operation across the street from their homes. Then that Saturday evening, if you hadn't read about it, there was a fire in the rail yard. A train car carrying newly-minted creosote logs caught fire and required an emergency response with full, I don't know what you call it, regalia for the emergency response team because there were chemical tanker cars on the rail line next to the creosote log car. Thank you to the firefighters who got that out, but what if? What if they had arrived 10 minutes later? We could have had explosions, and that's what those residents are fearful of. Many of them live on a dead-end street, but even if you were trying to escape a conflagration on foot and were running south, you would encounter another rail spur where there's often a line of chemical tank cars stored. You can rent space on rail spurs to store your chemicals. So you wouldn't be able to get out that way. The fire station number 2 and EMS control center is about .5, a half a mile away, and your own Public Works Department is less than that distance. Some have suggested that USD fuel should move maybe closer to Kinder Morgan, because that's another fuel station, delivery station with a lot of truck, but that would put that closer to Councilor Clark's constituents, because there is a neighborhood to the east close to that. So the only place is up Highway 99 near the fuel transfer station.
Thank you, Lisa. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Deborah McGee, followed by Zach Mulholland.
Good evening. My name is Deborah McGee. I'm a retired public school educator. Eugene has been my community for 40 years. I want to address your upcoming work session on the accelerated MUPTI conversation. I appreciate your goals of meeting housing needs. Recognizing smaller shared wall units close to transit and other services will help people in our community. However, you will fail to achieve any significant climate goals if you allow construction with methane as an energy source. I know you are following the city's progress toward meeting the 2014 Climate Recovery Ordinance. You will know that we are failing to meet the promise made and may well face lawsuits for this failure in the year 2030 when the goals are to be assessed. I know the City of Eugene is buying offsets to appear to be making progress, and I have to say that offsets do not reduce carbon emissions. Offsets are a false solution. What makes no sense, and is in fact absurd, would be to allow construction and development that digs the hole to our climate failures even deeper. A MUPTI with taxpayer money adding more carbon emissions would not help us reach our climate goals. We know that fracked gas hurts the health of our neighbors living near fracking wells and dealing with the radioactive toxic waste from the process. We know that burning methane in homes is responsible for 42% of childhood asthma and respiratory sickness. We know that even when not in use and vented, gas appliances leak 26 toxic chemicals, including 296 unique chemical compounds, 21 of which are federally designated as hazardous air pollution. I'm asking you to use your common sense and recommend that all new MUPTI recipients include climate and personal goals of safety by mandating electricity. Safer for the climate, safer for families, safer for all living things, and helpful in meeting the goals in the Climate Recovery Ordinance. A triple win. The longer we wait, the worse it gets. Isn't it time for every decision that you make to go through the lens of the Climate Recovery Ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Our next and final speaker is Zach Mulholland.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Zach Mulholland. I live in Ward 6. I want to speak to you tonight regarding the accelerated MUPTI proposal and ask that you please include a requirement that there be no new fossil fuel infrastructure in projects receiving a MUPTI. The city has a goal of reducing carbon emissions by over 90% based on clever climate recovery ordinance. 30% of the city's emissions are from natural gas, and we will need to reduce those emissions if we are wanting to meet our long-term goals. A building that runs on clean renewable electricity from E-Web is gonna use about a tenth of the emissions of a building using gas. Even if that building has a 10% higher efficiency standard, it will still emit about 10 times as much as the equivalent building heated with electricity from E-Web. The accelerated MUPTI program proposed rules effectively gut the MUPTI by removing all public benefit requirements from the MUPTI, and so if you are going to be moving forward with this, I would ask that you please include rules that strengthen the existing efficiency standards, include a no fossil fuel requirement in the new standard, and to also include stronger labor standards in that new proposal. And thanks for your time.
Thank you, Zach. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you very much, Cherish, and thank you to all of you for speaking to us today on a quite array of issues. Turning to council, are there councilors who have comments or questions they want to? Anything you want to respond to what you've heard? Council Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, just confirming that under the overpasses, that's ODOT property? With the major highways, and that's ODOT that's put the rocks in there? Thank you.
Many of them, correct.
Thank you.
Council Zelenka.
Have we put any rocks under overpasses?
Yeah, I would have to check with staff to see which ones, but I think there are some locations that in the past we have done that.
And then, Taiton, who talked about what's our homeless plan. If you go to our website in the search bar, type in homelessness, you'll see all the services and the plan and all of that the city provides to homeless people, and it's a pretty extensive list, so that's our plan so far.
Any other councilors wishing to comment? Oh, Council Evans, and then Council Yeh. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I've got a list. What do you know?
Yeah, that's right. Council Yeh beat me to it, so...
Okay. Go ahead, Council Yeh.
All right, thank you. I finally remembered to push the button. So first of all, I want to thank Lisa from, your new name, I'm gonna try to remember, Neighbors Feeding Neighbors, for the data. I look forward to seeing it, and I appreciate you bringing that in. I always, I think all of us really appreciate good data, and it does make a big difference when we're talking about these things. And lastly, Eva, I'm sorry I didn't, I hope I was saying your name right, maybe it's Eva... Oh, I appreciate, sorry for not saying anything last time you were here, and if you have the ability to stay, I would like to connect with you and see if I can get the information you need.
Okay, Council Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to address a comment that was made by Michael Beavers, who also happens to be from my Ward 6. We are currently working, I wish he was still here in the room. We are currently trying to work with police and city staff to address some of the issues that we are having on Highway 99, and particularly that is spreading out into the community as far as crime is concerned. We have a number of businesses actually, actually a handful of businesses who have decided to leave the area because of the issues and the rising rate of crime in the area. So there's a number of things that we need to do to try to stem this problem and deal with these issues, but we're not gonna be able to do it alone, and we had a very, I think, productive work session earlier about some of the plans that are underway to address some of the issues that we're facing with criminal activity that has entered in and has always entered into our homeless population. Not everybody who's homeless is a criminal, but there are people who are criminals who decide to use the homeless as covers for their criminal activity. So, you know, it's a difficult problem. It's a problem that we are continuing to address, and we need more police services, compassionate police services, as well as more human services that will help address the problem. So we are gonna look forward to working, you know, this winter term with our legislative representatives in Salem, coming out of Lane County and other places so that we can strengthen some of the remedies that we have in place to deal with some of these issues.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I will just speak to our climate activist friends in the audience, and thank you for speaking to the MUPTI. I just want to clarify that the public benefit criteria are retained in the accelerated MUPTI, so it is not, it is not being gutted, just to... So it is not, it is not being gutted, just to clarify that. But I do take your point about whether there's an opportunity to require or incentivize at some level all-electric buildings. So that's a good point. Thank you for bringing it up. And I think I'm happy to talk to you about that, so we can follow up. If there are no other comments or questions, I think we are finished with this meeting and we are adjourned. Thank you all so very much for coming.